Order this evening's meeting, which is the Hudson School District Annual Meeting on Tuesday, the thirteenth of September, two thousand and one. The first item on our agenda this evening is introductions. So I will introduce you to the board members and the people from the district that are joining me here this evening. My name is Barb Van Lunen. I am a member of the Hudson Board of Education and currently serving as the president. And for the board members, as I introduce you, if you could stand or wave or something. Tom Holland, a board member and vice president. Dan Chernahoy, clerk of the Board of Education. And Lynn Robson, treasurer of the Board of Education. We also have Brian Bell, board member. Pat German, board member. And Mark Kaiserschott, board member. Also joining us is the superintendent Mary Boanegabrotten. The financial services director, Tim Erickson. And with us this evening is our parliamentarian Mick Walzberger. So with the introductions, the next item on our agenda is the election of a chairperson for this evening's annual meeting. And I will turn it over to Mick to conduct the election of that chairperson.
Before we begin, I'd like to briefly review the parliamentary procedures that will govern how the meeting will be conducted this evening. And the procedures are designed, of course, to promote an orderly and free-flowing meeting. First, you need to understand the definition of an elector. By law, we need to review that. And each of you who is a citizen of the United States is eighteen years of age or older and has resided in the school district of Hudson for ten or more days before this annual meeting is considered to be an elector. Each elector has the right to make comments and ask questions at the appropriate point on the agenda. Comments must relate to an agenda item. You are encouraged to submit other comments in writing to the superintendent or to make them during the public comment session at a scheduled meeting of the school board. Comments must be made, as I said, at the appropriate place on the agenda. So for example, when we reach item eight on the agenda, which is the hearing on the budget, the electors will be provided with an opportunity to make comments and ask questions regarding the budget. If you're an elector and you desire to make comments or ask questions, you must follow a specific procedure. You must come up to the microphone, state your first and last name, state your address, and then wait to be recognized by the chair. After you've been recognized by the chair, you may then proceed to make your comments. Only one elector may speak at a time, and if we have a large number, which it does not look like we will here this evening, the amount of time could be limited to as few as three minutes. As an elector, you have the right to make motions relating to an agenda item at the annual meeting, again, provided that the motion is within the powers of the annual meeting. The powers of the electors at the annual meeting are limited by statute. And for instance, Wisconsin law does not authorize electors to amend, approve, or disapprove a proposed budget. However, the statute does authorize the electors to provide input on the budget and to vote a tax that is sufficient to operate and maintain the schools of the district. If an elector makes a motion that is beyond the powers of the budget, or excuse me, of the annual meeting, the motion may be ruled out of order and the chairperson may decline to hear the motion, or in the alternative, the chairperson may permit the motion to proceed on a purely advisory basis. Like comments, motions must be made at the appropriate place on the agenda. And in that regard, I'd like to discuss the adoption of the levy. After we complete item eight on the agenda, which is the hearing on the budget, the next item on the agenda will be the adoption of the levy. And at that time, the electors will be given the opportunity to make a motion to vote a tax sufficient to operate and maintain the schools of the district. If the electors do not vote a tax that is sufficient, the school board will be obligated to do so before November one. Similarly, if the electors vote a tax greater than the revenue limits or greater than the amount needed to operate the schools of the district, the board has the authority to lower that tax on or before November one. Other motions that are within the powers of the annual meeting and do not address the levy would fall under the agenda item for new business. And accordingly, any such motion should be made when we get to item ten on the agenda. There's a specific procedure for making motions. If you're an elector and you desire to make a motion, you must come up to the microphone, again, state your first and last name, state your address, and then wait to be recognized by the chair. After you've been recognized by the chair, you can then make your motion. After a motion has been made, another person must second the motion in order for it to be heard. If a motion does not receive a second, it will fail on its own. Once a motion has been seconded, the chairperson will restate the motion, and at that time the motion may be debated or it may be put to a vote. After debate has occurred, the chair will put the motion to a vote, provided it's within the powers of the annual meeting. There are some procedures for limiting debate in the event that debate becomes extensive. I strongly discourage you from using those unless absolutely necessary. For example, an elector may move the previous question. By moving the previous question, an elector is moving to have a vote on the pending motion immediately and without any further discussion. A two-thirds vote is required to move the previous question. As an elector, you have the right to vote at this annual meeting, and all voting will be by voice vote. Generally, all in favor of the motion will be asked to say aye, and all opposed will be asked to say nay or no. If the vote on a motion is closer and clear, the chairperson or I will ask the electors who said aye to stand and verbally count off using numbers beginning with the number one, and after being counted, each elector will then sit down. The same procedure will be used to count the electors who voted no, and the chairperson will announce the vote. The chairperson may act, or excuse me, may accept a challenge to the eligibility of any person who is attempting to vote at the meeting. If the person who has been challenged declares that he or she is eligible to vote and the challenge is not withdrawn, the chairperson must administer the following oath or affirmation: Do you solemnly swear or affirm that you are an actual resident of the school district of Hudson and are qualified according to law to vote at this meeting? Now having reviewed the parliamentary meeting procedures, the next item on the agenda is to elect the chairperson to provide over the meeting. And once a nomination is made, I will ask if anyone is willing to second that nomination, and if so, a vote will be taken. If there's no second, again, the vote will fail for a lack of second. So at this time, I am asking for nominations. Using a microphone, does any elector, including a board member, wish to voice a nomination for a chairperson of the annual meeting?
I wish to nominate Ms. Barb Van Lunen to serve as chair of the annual meeting.
Barb Van Lunen has been moved to serve as a chairperson. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a first and a second. Any debate? All in favor of nominating Barb Van Lunen to preside as the chairperson of this annual meeting, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion passes unanimously. With that, I turn that over to you.
All right. Thank you, Mick. We are on item four of this evening's agenda, which is approval of the annual meeting minutes from September seventh, two thousand and ten, last year. Is there a motion to approve those minutes which were included in the materials that were available in the back of the room and for the folks up here in the orange booklets?
So moved.
Motion by Brian, second by Dan. All those in favor of approving the minutes as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We are now moving on to that part of the agenda where the superintendent will present some of the district highlights.
Good evening to those of you who are spending the evening with us and are interested in the district and our cable television audience as well. Each time, each year at this time, I have the pleasure of being able to highlight what's happened over the last year and some of our district highlights, examples of the work of our students and our educators. This district has a very strong tradition of success, and you'll see through these examples that that tradition of success continues and actually has increased over the last year. We start our work with our strategic vision that came out of the Strategic Planning Process, HSD, two thousand and twenty-five. And it's appropriate for us tonight to start there as well. And I'd speak to that culture of excellence you see as part of that vision statement. We saw that in the first day of school as our teachers and administrators welcomed back students. There was energy and enthusiasm in our halls, excitement and expertise that always displayed on that first day and continues today and will continue throughout the school year. Unprecedented results. Last year, I was very pleased at the end of the year to see results that were unprecedented for the district, in the district's history. And this year, those unprecedented results are continuing and actually expanding from last year. So we'll start with the elementary and what's happened there. Again, these are only samples and portions of what has happened because of the work of our students and our staff. And eighty-nine percent of our students in kindergarten through fifth grade because of the work of our educators and those students' efforts as well, left their grade levels at the end of the year reading at or above grade level. Now, just in a couple of years ago, we had eighty-three percent of our students reading at grade level at the end of the year. And actually, the year before that, we believe it was in the seventy percent area, in the seventies, high seventies. But the data is a little different because we didn't have kindergarten in those numbers, so we're not going to use those numbers. But over the last couple of years, we've gone from eighty-three percent to eighty-nine percent. And that equates to about a hundred and sixty extra students or more students reading at grade level as they are finishing their grade level. Great accomplishment for our students and for our staff. In the area of math, we're seeing significant gains in the area of math, kindergarten through eighth grade, so elementary and middle school. There are, this is on multiple measures, and I'm going to give you an example of one of those measures. On the state standardized test, WKCE, that all of our students take in sixth grade, if we would look at the results in two thousand and five, at the advanced level, at the highest level, we had thirty-three percent of our students scoring in the advanced range. Last year, from thirty-three percent, we now have fifty-nine percent of those students scoring at advanced. And this isn't just at sixth grade. It's in fifth grade, we see it, a continual increase over those number of years. And we are able to adjust our curriculum as a result of that. We are moving down high school curriculum, further down into our middle school to serve those students because of their learning needs, because they're ready for it. In sixth grade this year, we have seventy-two students taking pre-algebra. In seventh grade, we have sixty-one students taking algebra, same course as the high school. And next year, we'll be adding geometry at the eighth grade. We already have had algebra at the eighth grade for a number of years. The middle school, when we look at their results on the standardized achievement test that's statewide, the middle school and composite score, all of the scores on those tests put together, ranked second in the state out of forty schools with eighth grades over two-hundred-and-fifty students. And so our middle school continues to be ranked highly in the state for achievement. And this is a middle school that is one building with the largest population of students, middle school students, in the entire state of Wisconsin. We just heard at the last board meeting, or the board meeting prior to this, from the middle school team of students who are national champions on the NASA Challenge. It was certainly wonderful to see these five students and what they have done and how they've represented themselves, their family, and the district. We thought last year that we had achieved a significant benchmark when the team from last year, a different team, became, came in second place nationally. And now this last year, that was the year before, this last year, we have first-place We have three middle school students who were recognized as promising young riders. This is a national recognition. There were eight students in the state of Wisconsin that achieved this, attained this goal. And so three of those eight, of all the students in Wisconsin, middle school students, three of those come from Hudson. We continue to have global champions at Destination Imagination. Our middle school team over the last year was another global champion. This is the fourth champion in the district's history. This team competed against teams from South Korea, Ontario, and China, among others. Certainly a significant accomplishment for these young people and a demonstration of their knowledge and skills, twenty-first century skills, in fact. Moving on to the high school, we have a graduation rate of nearly ninety-nine percent. That's very significant. And it is not just accredited to the high school, but it's accredited all the way through our early childhood program and the work that our educators do all the way through twelfth grade. The district has been named two thousand and eleven National Advanced Placement Achievement District. And this, to be named, you have to increase the number of advanced placement exams and also have a high passing rate on those exams. We had three hundred and ten students who took four hundred and eighty-one exams this last year, an increase for us from the previous year. Our passing rate is at eighty percent, and you can compare that to the state passing rate, which is at seventy percent. ACT scores, our students continue to score above the state average, twenty-three point seven. We anticipate that that number is going to increase as those elementary and middle school students I just talked about a little while ago, who are ahead in reading and math from previous years, move through our system and eventually take the ACT and handle a higher level of rigor as they move through the system. We had four national merit finalists and one commended student. And then our one-act play took top state honors, and the directors, Sue Dahl and Craig Lewis, won director's awards. Our forensic students earned thirty-three state medals in multiple categories. And certainly, we're known for our music program, both our vocal and our instrumental music program. And you can see, we always have strong representation in the state as state honors musicians. In the area of athletics, we certainly want to recognize the leadership of the Raider Council that represents the booster clubs in our community and also community leaders, as well as our coaches and staff. We had fifty-two all-conference athletes, forty-six, oh, that was first team, forty-six second-team all-conference athletes, and thirty-eight honorable mention athletes. Our athletic program is very strong and certainly contributes to the development of the youth in our community. The high school SAD chapter, Students Against Destructive Decisions, initiated a program called No Texting While Driving, certainly an important one for our youth and for our adults in our community and beyond. It was recognized locally on our local TV stations, in the paper, in our media, but it was also recognized by the U.S. Department of Transportation. We have more students achieving at high levels. And this reduction in placement and referrals of special ed over a two-year period is very significant. In fact, in a couple instances, when we've talked to other districts and people in other districts and told them about this drop in our referral and placement rate, at first, they didn't even believe us because they didn't think it could be done. And that system for learning that we have, our high expectations, and certainly the hard efforts of our students and the expertise of our staff have made this happen. And it's a pre-K through twelve initiative that is really benefiting all students to be learning at higher levels. Moving beyond our students, I'd like to just talk about a couple other things that have happened that are also unprecedented. We completed a middle school addition this year that was completed on time and on budget. It was under budget, in fact. We added needed space for FIED and orchestra classrooms, and we added multi-use space that served the cafeteria. It's a space that can, will be used highly throughout the day at the middle school, but it also will be used by our community and booster groups. This is another environmentally friendly project that the district has undertaken. The district certainly worked on our energy consumption as a way to help preserve our environment. And you can see the energy savings that we've had over the last few years. We have been recognized by the EPA as an energy star leader, and Sustain Hudson has given their Green Leaf Award to our R3 Committee, Reduce, Reuse, and Recycle Committee for their efforts in leadership in this manner. You know, we attribute and credit these unprecedented results, first of all, to our students and their hard work and effort, and to their families who have supported them. But then we also credit, certainly, our educators. We have a very talented staff that we benefit from, that is a great asset in this community. We have seven hundred and fifty-six employees in the Hudson School District, and we are the largest employer in St. Croix County. This year, we hired thirty-three teachers and twenty-three support staff, and those were primarily replacement positions for retirements or people who have moved out of the community. Only three of those were new positions for growth. An example, or a couple examples of our talented staff are the number of award winners for the state very highly-regarded Herb Cole Award. We had four teachers who were recognized for their efforts. Anne Syats from EP Rock, Chris DeLeon from the middle school, Kim Powers from the high school, and Cindy Landers from the middle school. We also had one student who we congratulate, a Hudson High School graduate now, Devon Descharnes, for being named a student scholar. These teachers and students act as role models for us, and we benefit from their leadership in the district. Another example of our talented staff is our high school biology team. They have been recognized nationally in an educational journal, actually, it's the American School Board Journal. And an article was written primarily about them and their work to improve student learning. And the article was written by an internationally-known educational authority that is known throughout the world. And lastly, just another example of our talented staff is our STRIVE program and the leadership provided by Cindy Mitchell. This program continues to support our youth who have challenges so that they can succeed and congratulate, 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 congrad, I can't say this, can, graduate, how about that? Talking too fast. This program certainly contributes to the graduation rate, got it, of ninety-nine percent that we have as a district. You know, and we certainly have to thank our community support and the community organizations that support us. When we started to make this list, we knew it wasn't inclusive because there are many more organizations that we can include that would take more than this page. So these are only examples of community organizations and efforts that support our work. We were overwhelmed by the number of school supplies that came in in the beginning of the year from people in our community, from businesses in our community, to support our students who are in need. And our, those school supplies were distributed to each of our eight schools so that they could share them with students. Our backpack program is sponsored by our local churches and certainly is a wonderful program that they fill backpacks with needed supplies, food supplies, for families in need. And over this last year, approximately a hundred and ten families were served through this backpack program twice a month. So that, it runs October through June. A thousand six hundred and fifty backpacks were delivered in a nine-month period. Certainly, strong support for our students and their families and commendable work by those individuals. Our community support extends to groups who come in and greet our students at the beginning of the school year annually and at semester. To welcome our staff back this year, we solicited statements from people in our community, leaders, parents, business people, about what they wanted to say to Hudson educators. And here's one of the comments that Chief Marty Jensen made about our staff. And again, it speaks to the level of support that our community has for Hudson educators. Now moving forward to this year, I'm just going to highlight a couple things because I know there's a few other things that have to happen this evening. And that is our, a couple of our two thousand and eleven, twelve district goals. The first one I'd like to talk briefly about is the high school learning for the future. This is an initiative that will move HSD two thousand and twenty-five forward and prepare our students for their future and help them be successful. We spent the last two years studying and researching the direction that we needed to go at the high school level to improve learning and to improve how we deliver learning. And this year, we've moved into the first phase of implementation with freshman advisors and freshman advisories. And we will continue to research this initiative and move forward other aspects of this model in the coming years, as it is a multi-year model for us. And it will continue to move us forward with those unprecedented results as we support students in their learning path. And the other district goal I'd like to highlight is the space for learning, the needed space for learning in grades six through twelve. I already talked about the middle school and the need for additional space there. The capacity at the middle school is well below the number of students that we currently have, and we expect that number to continue to grow. And I can see Principal Dan Coke back there already making faces about that anytime we mention the need for additional space. And just to highlight the difference with the number of students that we now have in our schools and serve. The class of two thousand and eleven, when they were in kindergarten, they were a kindergarten class of two hundred and sixty-two students, two hundred and sixty-two. Last year, our kindergarten started with four hundred and fifty-nine students. That's almost two hundred more students. This may be the first year in the Hudson School District's history where all of our classes, or almost all, are four hundred or more students. That's a very significant increase in the number of students that we've had long-term because of certainly the assets in the Hudson School District, but also this community as a whole. So we need to move forward with six, twelve space for learning and solving a long-term problem. We are presently looking to bring an offer to purchase for a piece of property to the Board of Education for approval and then to a referendum, we hope, in the future for our community to start to address our space needs. I started with the strategic vision, and that's a good place for us to think about and move forward. I hope that you've seen this evening examples of that culture of excellence that I talked about, and examples of each of these bullet points in the things that are unprecedented results in this school district. So the Hudson School District is achieving unprecedented results, and it's because of the reasonable investment that our community makes with their dollars. And at this time, I'm going to turn it over to board treasurer Lynn Robson, who will talk about the financial condition of the district. And then Tim Erickson will follow with the budget, proposed budget.
Thank you, Mary. Good evening, and thank you for attending the annual meeting.
Good evening, and thank you for attending the annual meeting of the Hudson Board of Education. My name is Lynn Robson, and I'm the treasurer for the Hudson School Board. I would like to thank Tim Erickson and all of his staff, as well as the rest of the administration and all of the collaboration, cooperation at all of our buildings to bring forward and deliver a conservative budget in a very difficult economic time. As a parent of students in the district, a community member, and a taxpayer, I, like all of you, have a vested interest in the quality of the education that we deliver and that we're providing to all of our students, as well as the value to our community. As a board, we recognize that the economic conditions continue to present challenges to our community, who are experiencing job losses, loss of savings and retirement, pay cuts that impact the bottom line to their families, and the changes in legislation that shape our future of education in our state. We are committed to balancing these challenges and produce the best possible result, a high-quality education at an excellent value. Recognizing the challenges of the economy on our community, as a board, we have reduced the general fund budget by more than 6%, or about $3.2 million from last year's budget, but not without pain and impact to our students and staff. These were cuts that resulted in layoffs and reductions in hours to our employees of over half a million dollars. Through these changes, we have remained committed to maintaining class-size guidelines when possible. This year, the board has taken action to bid out and change health insurance carriers for savings to the district of over $1.1 million. And through debt refinancing and restructuring this year, the board has saved taxpayers more than $1 million over the next five years. In spite of an estimated reduction in state aid of over 10%, or $2.6 million, we are proposing a 1.98% increase in the levy, which, as you may recall, the levy increase was zero for the previous year. The average annual levy increase over two years would be less than 1% per year. The levy represents an estimated $12 million below the minimum limit allowed by the state. We continue to explore ways to reduce costs in our energy consumption throughout the district. Since 2008, the district has experienced accumulative energy savings, and Mary mentioned this as well, of $459,000. And in 2010 and 11 alone, the energy savings was $128,000. And the district was named an Energy Star Leader for improving its energy efficiency by 10%. The district also received Sustain Hudson's Green Leaf Award, recognizing the district's sustainable practices. In 2011, the district added over 7,000 square feet of space to the state's largest population middle school to try to alleviate some of our short-term space needs. This project was completed, as Mary indicated, on time and on budget, and was financed by issuing $1 million in interest-free bonds. The district's total educational costs were the third lowest out of 425 districts statewide and the lowest in the CSAT 11 region, as determined by the Department of Public Instruction for 2009 and 2010, which is the most recent data available. The Hudson School District has continued to maintain a very high bond rating from Moody's AA1, one of the highest in the state, and top percentage nationally, which results in savings for our taxpayers. Moody's quotes from the latest bond issuing this year was that Hudson has, quote-unquote, "strong financial operations expected to continue," which is the result of conservative budgeting and strong cash reserves. The last few years have been tough for all of us, for taxpayers, school budgets, changes to our district employees, but we have been resilient and are working through these challenges together. The road ahead is not free of obstacles, but we are working together in ensuring that our educational experience for our next generation is strong. We remain committed to our strategic plan and thank everyone for the cooperation and the way they have worked together to keep persevering through the tough times. We remain committed, as a district, to preparing each student for post-secondary success through a culture of excellence. Thank you for your time this evening, and I'll turn the floor over to Tim.
Oh, good evening. I want to welcome everybody. I really appreciate you coming out this evening. I'm Tim Erickson, the Director of Financial Services for the district. And it's my pleasure to present the annual budget for 2011-2012. I want to, you know, first off, I do want to mention that if you're having trouble reading the booklets, the print is pretty fine. We do have larger print available. And Lois in the back does have a few additional booklets. If you want to just slip up your hand, she'll see that you get one, okay? With that, I do want to thank all the people who worked so hard to put this budget together. This is a long process. It takes, we start this process back in December, back in December of last year, and culminates with the board's final adoption in October. So we spend several months, it's a lot of work, especially now, it's been a lot of work with reductions in state aids and different grants. And so, again, I want to thank all the principals, the directors, their staff, department heads, superintendent and the board, because collectively, they have spent hundreds of hours putting this together. I also ought to say, thank the staff in my office, especially Mark and Lois, who've spent a lot of time helping put together what you see tonight. I think we could safely say that this has been one of the most challenging budgets probably in the past 20 years. Unfortunately, I think I said that two years ago, we had a very significant drop in our state aids of about 10%. This year, we're facing the same thing, only a little more severe. We've lost some grant, we've had some reductions in other grants and other aids as well. So when you look at our reductions overall, they've been, they've been pretty significant. It included a number of difficult, very difficult solutions. It included layoffs and reductions in hours for staff. Along with that, the district also, as you heard Treasurer Robson mention before, we bid out health insurance this year, so we are changing carriers effective October 1st. And you'll see, you know, you're really going to see throughout the presentation tonight that your board and administration have taken steps to minimize the effect to the taxpayer, even though the district has had its aid cut substantially. So I'm going to, what I'm going to be doing is, we'll have some things up here on the screen. Some of those things are in your book as well, and we'll, so you can kind of flip back and forth. If you can't read it in your book, look up on the screen. A lot of those things, like I say, will be up there. In budget planning, as was mentioned before, state aids and grant estimates, and I'm going to say estimates right now because our final numbers don't come in from the Department of Public Instruction and the Department of Revenue until October. So these are, again, we're working off estimates, but those have been reduced by over 10% or $2.6 million from last year's budget. So that's a revenue reduction of $2.6 million. The preliminary general fund balance, or general fund budget, has been reduced by 6.1% or almost $3.2 million from last year's budget. This was reduced in a number of different areas. All departments worked to reduce their budgets, and so we were able to come up with some substantial reductions, actually coming on the heels of two years ago. The estimated under levy, as was mentioned by Treasurer Robson, is estimated at about $12 million. And what that means for the taxpayer is that those, that $12 million, those are levies that are set aside and allowed for by the state, but your school board has decided not to levy that amount on taxpayers. And we've done this for a number of years, but I think, and each year, that number grows substantially. So those are dollars that are allowed for by the state for operations to be levied upon the local taxpayers. Again, the board has decided not to do that, though. And you're going to see throughout, you're going to see in some of the areas of this presentation that you are not going to find another district around that under levies for our size, that under levies as much as Hudson does. And to put it in perspective, last year, the Madison Metropolitan School District, which is about five times larger than Hudson, under levied by $10 million. So we're proposing in this budget that the under levy be about $12 million. All of these things, reducing budgets, make it especially difficult for any district that is experiencing growth in the way that Hudson has experienced growth. As you can see from the chart above, back in '92-'93, we had 3,245, and I'm going to call them aid membership, because this is a little bit different than a true headcount, but derived from headcounts, derived from the number of students in our district. We had 3245 in '92-'93, and now we're at 5,630 for this past year. And that's counted as membership, and that drives our revenue for the current year for 11-12. So again, you can see from '06-'07, 5,076, and to '56-30, even in that short period of time, we've had growth of over 500 students. What, the big challenge here is what we would call our state aid gap. If you look on this, to the left of this chart, the area in green represents additional state aid dollars each year that the district has realized. So back in 2005-2006, new dollars in state aid coming into the district was 2.9 million. In 2006-2007, additional 1.6 million was received in state aid, and so on and so forth. And that is all due to student growth. What happened in 2009-2010 is, again, the state having to balance its books, and so they reduced state aid to districts. And overall, back in 2009-2010, the overall pullback was 3%. Some districts experienced more than that 3%, and others experienced less. Unfortunately, Hudson experienced a 10% drop, and that's just the way the complicated funding formulas work. So again, the district balanced their budget going forward, and then the next year, we got back to normal again in '10-'11, and the district received $1.6 million in additional state aid due to growth. Now, again, we're back to where we started, back in 2009-2010, and we've been pulled back by $2.5 million in state aid loss. Looking down at the bottom. In 2005-2006 to 2008-2009, the district received an average of $1.9 million in additional aid per year. So if you look at those numbers going up through '08-'09, we received $1.9 million in additional aid dollars each year. And again, that's to accommodate growth in students. We have growth in students. We have to hire teachers and support staff to support those students. Since 2009-2010, the pictures changed dramatically. The district has lost an average of over $1.16 million in aid per year. So we've gone from gaining 1.9 to losing 1.6 on average. So a pretty significant, very significant decrease in aid. Again, if you look at creating a funding gap that's on average $3 million a year, if you look at it for 11-12, we're looking at really about $4.4 million per year as far as a gap. In 2011-12, our state aid revenue is estimated to be $440,000 less than fiscal 2006-2007. So going back again in 2006-2007, we received $22,677,000 in aid. This year, we're projected to receive $22,233,000, even though our aid membership has grown by 554 students. So when we grow in students, again, we wish they grow in nice, even pockets and we could staff our classrooms accordingly, but they don't, and we have to accommodate that student growth. So even though we've got student growth, we're being cut in our revenue. So it does create, again, a very challenging situation for a district growing as fast as Hudson. The next slide shows a, shows the revenues of the general fund as budgeted in '10-'11. And to get a little bit of an idea of where our revenue sources come from, as you would imagine, the bulk of those revenues come from state sources, about $25,299, and local sources, of course, from the tax levy, $23,650. And then we get a small slice of federal revenue in the green of about $736, and then there are other sources from fees, charges, gated admissions, those types of things. So again, our main pieces of the operating budget for Hudson are state aid and a local property tax levy. In 2011-12, we've seen a shift. And so you can see that shift is a lower amount in state aid, $22,678, and then a slightly higher by 1.98%. And that's, I must say, total levy, I'm talking general fund and debt service. And that's $24,378 for the general fund. And you can see local, federal sources grew, and that is due to some shifting. We had the ability to shift some federal revenue from last year into this year, which has helped us relieve the amount that otherwise would have to be levied. And then we have our other sources of revenue. And again, that's gone up because we have raised athletic fees and fees in other areas for facility use. And I'm going to back up to, if you go into your booklet, and you turn to page 10, page 10 gives the different revenues that we, the different funds that we use to account for our operations in the school district. And the first one is the general fund. And the general fund accounts for most operations of the school district, as you can see. If you look across to the 11-12 budget, we're projecting, or estimating, $48,759,000 of revenue, and that's down from our last year's budget, 2010-11, of $50,349. Special Revenue Trust Fund, that's a Fund 21, and Fund 21 accounts for private grants. The school district receives some grants from private sources such as the Education Foundation to benefit students. And the proposed budget of revenues are $49,000 there for this year. Special Education Fund, Fund 27, accounts for all the operations of special education and our special ed students. And you can see that that, those, the revenue has dropped down from the budget at $8.3 million to $7.6 million. Nonreferendum debt service, as Treasurer Robson mentioned earlier, the district, through a middle school addition, issued, the board issued bonds, and those bonds, the good news is those bonds were interest-free. So there was no interest cost to the taxpayer in those bonds. They're actually refunded interest from the federal government. So those are some revenues, $42,000 is refunded interest on those bonds. Fund 39 is referendum-approved debt service, and those are, that fund, our past referendums, debt service on past referendums that have been approved by a taxpayer. You can see that's jumping up dramatically from $4.5 million to $14 million. The reason for that is, in July, the school board took advantage of an opportunity to refinance $9.6 million in bonds. That refinancing will save about a million, a little over a million dollars for our taxpayers over the next five years. The increase there, you'll see a corresponding increase And those are, that fund, our past referendums, debt service on past referendums that have been approved by a taxpayer. You can see that's jumping up dramatically, from 4.5 million to 14 million. The reason for that is, in July, the school board took advantage of an opportunity to refinance 9.6 million in bonds. That refinancing will save about a million, a little over a million dollars for our taxpayers over the next five years. The increase there, you'll see a corresponding increase on the expenditure side, down in the lower section. And that's an accounting transaction, just required to account that way. So, we account for the refinancing as a revenue and as an expense. But, again, that results in savings. Fund 45 is, was used to account for the middle school addition. And no budget there this year, that project is complete. And as mentioned before, it was completed on time and under budget. Fund 50 accounts for our food service, and so that is a non-local taxpayer expense. Those fees, of course, much of those fees are derived from fee-for-use. So, of course, students and parents pay for those lunches. Community Service, Fund 80 and Fund 81 are really looked at together. And, again, some districts levy for community service, Hudson does not. That is fully supported by fee-based revenue from a school-age care program and community service classes. And Fund 95 is a cooperative venture with New Richmond and St. Croix Central for the youth apprenticeship program. And Hudson is the fiscal host for that program. Going down to the bottom section, expenditures by fund. Fund 10, you can see, as was mentioned before, the 2011, '12 expenditures of 48,759 are 6.13% lower than this past year's budget, 1011, 51,944. The Special Revenue Trust Fund is showing expenditures of 90,000. And you might ask, how can they bring in revenue of 42 and spend 90? That doesn't make sense. The reason for that is it's a timing issue, timing of when the grants were received versus when the grants are expended. So, the money has been received and is there, it's just more of it's being expended in this 1112 fiscal year. And Fund 27, again, which is special education, that is balanced out. The general fund, as a matter of operation for all districts in the state of Wisconsin, the general fund picks up what's left over after special ed, federal revenues, and state categorical aids are received. Fund 38, again, non-referendum debt service, that's accounting for the interest expense. And up above, you have the interest revenue, so zero cost. Fund 39, again, 14 million, that's the 9.6 million in refunding, or refinancing of the 9.6 million in bonds. And jumping down, food service, again, revenues are equal to expenditures there. And community service, we're spending about 54,000 more than we're taking in. However, we have an opportunity to access some funds there, so. And then the vocational cooperative fund for the youth apprenticeship. If you look at page 11 of your booklet, again, you can see the percentages of the revenue breakdown for the general fund, for what we budgeted for 1011 and then what's proposed for 1112. And you can see the state sources are going down about a little over 4% in total as far as a share of the pie. And the local sources are going up 2.67%. If you turn to page 12, page 12 goes into a little more detail. And I know that people probably want to get to bed tonight, so I won't go through all of this detail. The, I'm going to point out a few major items. Local sources, taxes, of course, that's the big item, it's the first line. And that is, that's the local property tax levy, 24 million's being proposed. Again, a 1.98% increase over last year, and last year was zero. So, when you look at the average over two years, it's under 1% per year. Moving down to state sources, underline 610, state aid categorical. You can see that's dropping down from 365 down to 343. That represents a loss, a cut in some other transportation aids and school library aids. Looking down to the next line down is state aid, is our state aid revenue. And, again, that's going down a little over 10%. And the next line below that is DPI, special project grants. That's dropping from 120 down to 30, and that was due to the loss of state funding for one of our educational programs. Other than that, bringing down our total revenues, towards three-quarters down, towards the bottom, 48,759,000. Expenditures and other financing uses follow. And, again, you can see, as you're looking across those line items, from the 1011 budget to the 1112 budget, most of those line items are down. And if you go to, down over to the next page, page 13, total expenditures and other financing uses, you can see that's going down from 51,944 to 48,759. And then you can see the change in fund balance from beginning to end. And from 910 to 1112, fund balance projected to drop about 800,000. The next section is special education and private grants. And you can see the expenditures there, I won't get into a lot of detail. The debt service fund is the fund that, of course, counts, accounts for our debt service, the two debt service line items that you saw previously. And other than noting that in the total revenues and other financing sources, the 14,156 includes 4.3 million of levy revenue. The line for 282, refinancing is the 9.6 million in bonds that have been refinanced. And then you can see at the very bottom of that line, the indebtedness at the end of the year. And we're going to, we projected to stand at 29.4 million of principal on that bonded debt. And the state allows bonded debt to be no higher than 10% of the equalized value of the district. And we're at, we're standing at under 1%. So, our bonded debt is very, very low. On page 14, you see the Capital Projects Fund, that mainly held the cost for the middle school addition. And you can see the food service fund, community service fund, Fund 80, which, again, is Funds 80 and 81. If you take this home for light evening reading, you go to that summary of funds, and Fund 80 and 81 are accounted for together. And then the package in cooperative, and that's the youth apprenticeship program. At the very bottom is what we call our Other Post-Employment Benefits Trust. School districts in the state of Wisconsin set up trusts to account for other post-employment benefits. And you can see the results, the annual results of that trust. And that trust balance has gone down over the past few years. There have been changes made to contracts, et cetera, to bring that down. On page 15 is the historical valuation levy and mill rate, and then preliminary estimates in 1112 of where we think we're going to wind up. If you go down to the bottom to 2010, 2011, you can see the district valuation stood at 3,349 million. And that was about a 7.71% drop from the previous year in district valuation. The total tax levy was 27,828, and that was a 0% change in the tax levy. It was, it was the same amount the year before, give or take a few dollars. For 1112, we're anticipating a 1.74% drop, according to the non-district-specific information from the Department of Revenue. And so, that would bring the valuation to 3,291 million for a tax levy of 28,378. So, that's a 1.98% increase over last year. The estimated valuation and levy by taxing district is, those are all estimates at this point, and they will change, and mostly, slightly, but they will change. And you can see the different percentage change in values. So, we've had a wide range of valuation changes in the district. We've had a town of Hudson at almost a 2% increase in valuation. And the town of Troy at a little over a 12% decrease. So, there's been a lot of variation in what's happening out there to property values in each one of those taxing entities. And then you can see the percentage of value that each one of those entities has in the district. And then how that, how that actual tax levy would be spread to each one of those entities. It's important to remember that when we give this tax information and mill rate information, it's based prior to any credits that are given back on a tax statement. So, there's a first dollar credit, there's a school levy tax credit, and this information is presented before those credits are taken off. The reason that is, because that information does not come out until school districts are required to have a budget passed. So, we won't know what those numbers exactly are until then. But those all go to reduced taxes paid to the district. Okay, now, we're going to, we're going to attempt to give you highly summarized information on what happens when assessed values change. Assessments are happening in the city, and as I understand it, in the township of Troy, or St. Joseph, I'm sorry, the township of St. Joe. And this example sets forth, we have, we have a mythical town called Raider Town, Wisconsin, population, two residences. The 2010 assessed values are $100,000 each. So, therefore, each resident owns 50% of the total property value in the Raider Town district. The school tax levy in this example is $2,000. And so, when those taxes are applied, each residence pays 50% because they each own 50% of the value, total value in the district. So, they'd each pay $1,000. In 2011, we would look at assessed value going up to $110,000. And then, and we'll throw in another year here, 2012, assessed value going down to $90,000. But you see the arrows point back up to the share that each resident would pay, and that hasn't changed. Because even with a change in assessed value, residents still own 50% of the value of the property, total property within the district, and each resident's share of the levy remains the same. Now, I know, and we all know, that this is a, this is a perfect example. There are all sorts of things that happen out there, that, there are all sorts of variations. But this is an example of what happens if you have valuation, if you have assessments that are ratably increasing or decreasing about the same amount on each piece of property. And it also assumes you have a school district in this example where the tax levy doesn't change. But it kind of boils it down into a very simple, simple example to get some additional understanding in how that process works. Okay, I'm going to go to the mill rate comparisons. And these are 2010, 2011 mill rate comparisons for neighboring districts. And we don't have 1112 yet because everybody's going to be doing their budgets this year and passing their budgets in the next few weeks. So, in that, you can see that Hudson is at $8.31. River Falls at 1041, Menominee also at 1041. Baldwin-Woodville at 1118, St. Croix Central 1142, New Richmond 1170, and Somerset at 1251. So, you can see Hudson is by far the low, has the lowest mill rate of many of our neighboring districts here. Okay, now, I'm going to jump to page 18 of your book. We've got some additional information on the district and comparing the district statewide and within some other categories. If you look at districts, or if you look at Hudson's rank, for total educational cost is determined by the Department of Public Instruction in 2009, 2010. The district rank is 423rd out of 425 districts for total educational cost. So, it's the third lowest cost per student in the state. If you compare that, and this comparison takes districts, the snapshot that you see here takes districts with 4,000 students. If you look at districts with 4,000 students, Hudson is down at the bottom. It's the lowest of 4,000, of those districts with more than 4,000 students, $10,055. So, really, a very, very efficient district. If you're looking at our CISA 11 region, and CISA 11 covers all of those 39 districts that you see on page 19, again, looking at total educational cost. And you can see Hudson is the lowest. The next one above is Colfax at 10,589 per student. And this, again, is 2009, '10 information. Moving on to page 20, if you want to look at comparisons on mill rate and how Hudson looks in comparison to the rest of the state. Hudson's mill rate is 342nd, lowest of 425 districts. And that's in the bottom, 20% of districts. You can see it at 767. And, again, this is 910 information because this is the latest statewide information that's available from the Department of Public Instruction. You can see the state totals, the average is 855 per 1,000 of value. Going on to page 21, you can see 910 mill rate. We looked at school district valuations greater than 3 billion and less than 5 billion. And, again, when you look at Hudson, there are 27 districts with valuations between 3 and 5 billion. And if you look at Hudson, Hudson ranks 20 out of 27. Once again, for 2009, 2010. Moving on to page 22, again, a tax, or mill rate comparison in a graphical form. So, Hudson's 36th, lowest out of 39 districts. And then the table on page 23, which gives a breakdown of those different levies for each one of those CISA 11 districts. And it's important to note that if you look under, about the middle of the column, community service, tax levy, Fund 80, there are six of 39 districts in the CISA that levy, that do not levy for community service, and Hudson is one of those. Page 24. This is in reference back when I first started talking about the under levy of $12 million. This is 1011 information, again, this is the latest information on revenue limits and under levies that's available from the Department of Public Instruction. There are, there were, in 1011, there were 71 districts that under levy $100,000 or more. Again, Madison Metropolitan, which has about 25,000 students, under levy $10 million. And you can see Hudson is second. In previous years, Hudson's been first. And I would, I would garner that if everything holds and there is an under levy of $12 million, Hudson will again be first in the state. And so, that just really speaks volumes. When you look at the size of the districts and the amounts of the under levies, the third district, in, at number three place in under levy is Kenosha, a much, much larger district than we are, 3.6 million. So, when you look at the two top districts, Hudson and Madison, there just isn't a comparison for how much Hudson under levies. And you can see, if you look at the page 25, bottom of page 25, those total under levies were 70 million, 70.5 million across the state last year. Of that total, Hudson's 8.9 million made up 12.69% of the total. Page 26 is property tax history on an actual residential property in the school district. And in looking at that year from '95 through 2010, the total property taxes were, went up $891 or 45%. Those total property taxes paid to the school district, paid to the city, if this residence is in the city, or paid to a township or village. is in the city, or paid to a township or village. County property taxes, WITC taxes, it's everything. So all the different taxes that are paid on that residence. Now, if we split out the school district portion of those taxes, they went up by $154 or 13.3% over that time period. And the value of the home went up $101,900 or 116%. So it gives you a little bit of an idea, over long-term, the tax impact on school district, for the school district. Page 27 shows a balance sheet. And those of you that are familiar with financial statements, this is a highly summarized balance sheet. This is a snapshot in time on June 30th, 2011, so the end of our fiscal year. Cash and investments were 8.5 million. Receivables, almost 14 million. Payables, withholding and withholdings and net payroll at 6.4 million. And a fund balance of 15.9 million. The district does hold, you look at that, you may say that's a lot of cash and investments to hold. And it's certainly relative to the size of a district. And the reason that the district does hold cash is that our payments for state aids and especially tax revenue for local tax base comes in, we get a chunk in January, February, and we get a chunk in August, September. And then we have to make it last. And so it's imperative to have good cash flow. If the district doesn't have good cash flow, like many other districts, they have to go out and bond or get a line of credit at a financial institution and then pay the charges and pay the interest on that. At this point, Hudson hasn't had to do that. So it is a good savings to the taxpayer. And page 28 is information on all the different bond issues. And again, you can see the indebtedness projected through 630 at 29 million. And then on the right side of that, of that sheet is the amount needed for the tax levy for debt service. But again, when you take the tack, the levy together, it's the operations, the general fund levy is one, and then the debt service levy is the other. And that's an increase of 1.98%. And I've gone through those pages, so we'll move to the next slide. And what do you get for your value for a 1.98% increase in the levy? It gives you unprecedented results. Superintendent Bowen Egerbrot mentioned tonight, you saw all the great results, all the great achievements of the students here. And it just, it's pretty amazing. We're able to do that while being one of the lowest spending districts per student in the state. We have continued high expectations for learning, a systems approach that supports each student in achieving higher levels, and a high-quality staff establishing best practices for every student in every classroom, every day. So you really, the Hudson School District is putting forth and expecting a lot and delivering a lot. And that concludes the annual budget. Thank you.
Thank you, Tim. We are on agenda item number eight, hearing on the budget. It is at this point that I would invite any elector who wishes to make a comment or ask a question about the budget to come forward to the microphone. Remember, we will ask you to state your first and last name before you make your comments.
Brand Whirl, 1210th Street, North Hudson. Just wish to express my appreciation for the good job that you've all done to get through this school year and look forward to a 2% levy or tax increase. It's an admirable job, and I thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Is there anyone else who wishes to make a comment or ask a question? Seeing no movement to the microphone, I would move to the next item on our agenda, which is the adoption of the levy. And at this point, I would invite an elector to make that motion. The language of that motion can be found on page 16 in the booklets that you have.
Madam President, I'd like to make a motion. I'd like to move for the proposed resolution to set the tax levy for 2011-12, be it resolved that a tax in the total amount of $28,378,887, of which $24,72,807 for the general fund, and $4,306,080 of debt service fund be and is hereby levied against the taxable property in the Hudson School District for school purposes.
There is a motion by Lynn Robson. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Brian Bell. I will call the question. All electors are invited to participate in that voice vote. Is there any discussion or question before I call? Seeing none. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The final section on our agenda for this evening is new business. We do, as part of the new business, we need to set the date for next year's annual meeting. Is there a motion to set the annual meeting for 2012?
Madam President, I move that the next annual meeting date for the year 2012 be set for Tuesday, September 11, 7:00 PM. I imagine here in Hudson someplace.
Motion by Tom Holland. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mark Kaiser-Schott. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The last item on our agenda is open for any other new business that may be brought during the course of this annual meeting. Is there any other piece of new business? All right, seeing none.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
There is a motion and a second to adjourn the annual meeting. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion, or meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much for those of you who were able to join us this evening.